Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The Mayor of Tallahassee, I'd like to call this Tallahassee City Commission Meeting to Order. It is 3:03 in the afternoon. It's great to see everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor and privilege to introduce the Reverend Stanley Walker, Sr., of Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church. They'll be providing the invocation. Reverend, thank you so much.
Let us bow heads in prayer. God our Father, it is indeed that we live, move, and have our very existence. We acknowledge you as our Creator. As we come on this day, we come before you, thank you for the gift of life and for every blessing of life that you have blessed us with. We thank you for the privilege and the opportunity that we have on this day to come together and ask for your divine guidance and blessing on this meeting, that you would give each one guidance and direction and direct their thoughts, actions, and behavior, that we may learn to respect one another. We ask you for your favor to help us to accomplish the work and the task that is before us this day. Yes, we ask in the mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Reverend Walker, it is great to see you. Thank you so much for joining us today and look forward to seeing you again real soon. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have a City Commission meeting along with a public hearing at 6 o'clock today. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the business. I'd like to encourage everybody, as I do at the beginning of every meeting, let's set the example for everybody in chambers and watching on TV on how good governance works and how we can all treat each other respectfully. Do we have any agenda modifications, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Item 8.03 has been deleted and will be rescheduled for a later meeting.
All righty, any other agenda modifications?
No, sir.
Any questions on the modifications? Seeing none, do we have any presentations this evening?
No, sir.
Do we have any announcements this evening?
No, sir.
Do we have any appearances by City Commission-appointed boards, committees, or other governmental entities?
No, sir.
All right, we're on the consent agenda, 8.01 and 8.02, 8.04 and 8.05. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on any of those items?
No, sir, we do not.
Direction?
Moving.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 10.01, the environmental board appointments. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. This item seeks appointment of two individuals to the environmental board. Each of them will fill a term that would expire October 31st of 2024. Seat number one, George Reynolds, is recommended. Seat number two, Frank Howell. Recommended action is to approve those two individuals to the environmental board.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move for approval.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 10.02, the audit committee appointment. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. This item seeks appointment of a single individual to seat one. The audit committee has a seat that is currently vacant, that is seat one. Recommended appointee is Patricia Griffin. Recommended action is to appoint her to seat one.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right.
Second?
Commissioner Richardson has properly moved staff recommendations, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney, do we have any introduction of ordinances this evening?
No, we do not, Mayor.
We are on policy formation and direction. Item 12.01, concurrency fee support for motel conversion to affordable housing. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll set this up and I'd like to ask John Reddick, our growth management director, to provide a little more information. But this item seeks your approval for financial assistance with traffic concurrency and mitigation fees for a proposed conversion of a Motel 6 on North Monroe into studio apartments and certified affordable residential units. You've taken other similar types of actions to encourage the conversion of these units into affordable housing units. The request is for $19,104. It would offset the balance of concurrency fees that this would owe. You could use the American Rescue Plan funding that you've already appropriated for these kind of actions to do so. Overall, it would result in 105 new units, new affordable housing units, that you've yet to discuss. It would add to the totals that you've heard previously. And it would target individuals earning around 60% of the area median income. May I ask John to speak a little bit more about this and put some context on it?
Mr. Reddick, good to see you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I did want to take a moment to highlight how we've reached this opportunity. This is a development proposed on our North Monroe corridor just south of I-10. It's a project where the applicant approached our staff and growth management several months ago with preliminary ideas for this, not necessarily for affordable housing, but explicitly for workforce. And as we worked through and acknowledged that they were going to have some traffic concurrency fees based on the change of use and the impacts that would have in that corridor, we started highlighting some opportunities for them to consider classifying this as affordable and being eligible for other incentives as a result of that. So with that, we were able to coordinate with Dr. Thomas's team. They agreed to certify as affordable. That brought down their currency mitigation fees by more than 50%. So this is an effort to bridge that gap there further. And really, all that leaves them with from us as a city is for them to get a commercial building permit and move forward with this conversion. So we're excited for it. This is a developer who has done this previously in Georgia and Alabama. They provided us with a number of renderings of other conversions they've done for these studio apartments. But this is an example of the policies that they would make.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir, Mayor, we do not on 1201.
Mr. Reddick, another great job of staff, thinking creatively, working with the private community to move forward. We certainly do appreciate it. Opened it up for discussion, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While you're here, could you talk a little bit about the traffic impacts and the valuation of $40,000 in the concurrency fee?
Sure. So that is part of the, I'll say, reason why you have current motel operating and then there's a traffic impact that is assessed with conversion to a residential use. When we do our traffic impact assessments, it looks at your evening peak demands, basically. So uses that are going to have a lot of, you know, patterns of traffic coming and going in the evenings are like residential uses, office uses, that are on a rush hour pattern. They're going to be assessed at a higher demand than, say, a motel, which is sort of steady coming and going throughout the day. So looking at this, it looks at a number of road segments within that area. It's not necessarily just North Monroe or Lake Shore, but to see, and I think a number of those corridors are already at capacity. So this, where we'd be saying we're going to a use that is going to increase those rush hour, or anticipate to increase those rush hour trips, then that's where we're left with the.
Okay. Because eventually, that bill will come due, correct, to address those traffic impacts?
Yes, yes.
That's the reason for guarantee?
That's correct.
Okay. So after they became a certified affordable project, there was already a reduction of $21,000 to the concurrency fee?
That's correct. And that's the result of affordable housing is assessed at a different rate than market rate because of more variety in transportation options used.
And what is the reasoning for considering an additional $19,000 reduction? I'm sure everybody would like a reduction in their concurrency fee. So what is the reasoning for this project specifically to get a further reduction?
Sure. And I think this was something in coordination with the developer that for them to commit to that 60% AMI, which is below our typical affordable requirement, which Dr. Thomas can speak better than I can, but to certify is a minimum of 80% or lower. So getting to them to that 60% commitment, this was a request that they brought to us.
Okay. That's the questions on that. And then I had a budget question, Mr. Manager, or Robert, or whoever can answer it, on the ARPA funding. I know we, is that next year's, the budget shore-up that we're allocating for next year's funding? Is that current ARPA, already committed funds?
Mr. Mayor, these are dollars that specifically the commission assigned for affordable housing. So they're not the revenue makeup dollars that would be part of your overall budget process. Robert can provide more detail if you'd like it, but you recall that there was a number of segments that you reserved dollars for, and affordable housing was one of them. It would come from that.
Okay.
Robert?
And just to follow up on that, could you let us know how many unallocated affordable housing dollars remain if this was a previously unallocated project?
So if you recall, the city received two tranches for the ARPA funds, $23 million in two segments. You directed $18 million of that towards various efforts to bring human service responses to the community, one of which was affordable housing. The balance went to revenue replacement for the general fund, gas tax, sales tax. We are probably between 50 and 75% spent, encumbered, for those, that entire amount. It varies by the various project. We probably have 30 projects open that track, working in the community to speak to COVID resistance, working in the community for affordable housing, working in the community to incentivize affordable housing actions. But just from recollection, we're about 50 to 75% spent of that funds because the crux, the bottom line is we have to have it spent by the first quarter of fiscal year '25. So we know that fiscal year '24 is the last year we can use the funds, and we know that we have to then report in that quarterly report that we're 100% encumbered.
Mr. Matlow?
And just to follow up on that, so what's available unspent? Is that previously committed or allocated? Or is that needs to be spent, that 40%, or whatever the percentage is?
So the range of the 50 to 75% that we've encumbered and spent, I think as we see opportunities, then we encumber those funds and then reconsider our plans as we move forward in those projects.
Okay, thank you. Just in closing, I'm going to vote against this. I think $200 per unit is a reasonable price to ask for concurrency to help mitigate future traffic concerns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Commissioner Richardson, and then Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first of all, am pleased to move that we accept staff recommendation on option number one.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Richardson, you have the floor.
And I think that this is, again, a creative way for us to address what is, second to public safety, the highest priority for our community right now, is to provide affordable housing for our residents that desire that. And if we've got the funds, they're not general revenue funds, they're funds that have come down from the federal government that we can use for this purpose. And I see no better use for those funds at this point. And so for that reason, and the other thing that I, the other two observations that I would make on this, one is how our departments have broken down silos to work together to address this issue, both planning and our housing department. And secondly, how this type of housing is being equitably distributed around the community. It's not just on the south side of town. This is in that North Monroe Street corridor, where housing like this probably does not exist currently. If it does, I don't know about it. And so for those reasons, I certainly would, I strongly support this effort and the recommendation by staff to waive the concurrency fees, in this instance, of $19,000.
Great. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really am pleased to see this development. I think this is a great example of how we took an initiative with policy and we're seeing the outcome of that. I have a few questions. And I had a question about how we determine when we offer this or not. I spoke to our city attorney. That is something we've worked on and we've talked about, but we're holding off. She explained for legislative session, this might be something that could impact that. But I do think that's important, that we have a policy, so that how we make these determinations is predictable, not only and fair, not only to us, but to those who want to develop affordable I have a few questions. What did, what was the change in rent when it became a certified affordable housing project? Kind of what was the change, given these incentives?
Dr. Thomas, good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Commissioner Porter, the developer was right around, right at 80% AMI, which is the trigger for affordability with HUD guidelines, with the extra incentives for residents, with water utilities and those things per resident. He was working even down to 60% AMI.
So I know it's at 1137 now, or something like that. What was it, do you remember what it, like, what would it have been?
It came in at 1137. With the additional amount of what they would be giving residents, actually, it's going to be like 837.
Okay, so it's going to be 837 now?
With the incentives that they're giving. It came in right at 80. We could not have certified if it had been over the 80%. It came in at 80, which made it affordable. And they do an extra incentive with respect to what they're supporting each residence with, to even bring even lower to 60%.
I support this, of course. I guess I'm wondering how $40,000 made the difference, you know what I mean, between, I mean, because usually, it's a lot more than that. I mean, I would assume that's a loss. Is the developer here by any chance?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, okay. I mean, that's something that I would just be interested in knowing, you know, and I think it's important information for us, is whether the money, the incentive we're providing is actually making a significant difference, you know? You know, it's a $1.2 million project. $20,000 seems unlikely to me to make or break it, or to make sense to the developer to really reduce rents. I don't see how $20,000 really accounts for, you know, will make up for that profit loss. But I'm excited about this project, and I'm glad that it was, you know, that they're coming to town. I think it is pretty incredible that, you know, not only with the price, but all that it includes. You know, because when I first saw the price, I was like, mm. But then when you see it includes utilities, it includes Wi-Fi, all of that stuff, you know, I think that's going to be great. And that's an area where, especially during COVID, there's been a lot of concerns about safety, about loitering, you know, all kinds of things going on. And I think when you have, because it's so commercial, when you have residential units there, I think that has a stabilizing effect on that area.
Certainly aligns with our strategic plan of justice for conversions, adaptive use, and certainly eliminate potential blight by having that property utilized correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager for comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Thomas, if you'll stay here, because I want you to expand upon this, because I think this gets to the crux of the conversation. This was known to our growth management department as going to be market rate rents and not certified. A big distinction is the certification, the commitment to do it in the, you know, in the future. And that's when the growth management department pulled in Dr. Thomas's group. And your questioning, I think, is appropriate. How much leverage do you need to get someone to commit to something like this? And would they have done it otherwise? Well, I can tell you, they weren't going to do it otherwise. Staff was really, really adamant. They tried to get them there, and what could get them there. And so, Dr. Thomas, if you can kind of, I mean, you guys were telling me about this in terms of your efforts to convince the developer that this was good and in their best interest, and the tools that you had at your disposal. Now, what we know is, it's not limited to the concurrency fees, which wouldn't have been qualified for if they didn't agree to the certification, including the first $21,000. That was a condition. They were going to get the first $21,000, but there were water and sewer fees as well. So it was a package of incentives, and the team had to work really hard to get them there. And I think it probably, just being insightful, there was a lot of back and forth. And ultimately, if we, Dr. Thomas, if we have an opinion of what convinced the developer to make this commitment, because it's not a simple agreement, it's a commitment that'll live on and that really, if you think about it, if market rents go up in the future at a rate faster than wages, this protects against that. But, so, Mr. Mayor, I think it'd be great, just a little more depth on this.
Yes, thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Part of the discussion that we had with the developer, number one, was a need for this type of development. And we looked at across the spectrum that they had had a history of doing this and bringing the kind of beautification. We also talked about the potential that it would bring to that part of corridor. I think Commissioner Richardson stated that, that it would give us opportunity for affordability in that corridor. And as you know, that corridor's had some challenges with respect to that area, that Motel 6. So we talked about all those things, and we packaged it to make them understand that with respect to our community, we're looking at opportunities for affordability. We're looking for opportunities for conversions and expansions and adaptive use. And after a lot of back and forth, they agreed, and they looked at, too, the scoping of what we were doing. And I think it was a pleasant way for them to meet us halfway and actually a little bit further with respect to the item.
Mr. Mayor?
Excellent. Commissioner Porter?
And I do want to make clear, I'm going to support the motion. I am excited that this is coming. You know, it's just important, $20,000, you know, it's only $20,000, but it's $20,000. Once you spend it, we can't unspend it. And so it's just important that, I appreciate, Mr. City Manager, that explanation. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Dr. Thomas and John Reddick, for being in the, standing in the gap. I met with the community group who said to us that developers are not interested in doing affordable housing because there is no incentive. But here we are, proving that wrong. So here's an opportunity for us to hit our high priority of housing for our community. You know, the chambers have estimated that our population growth is going to jump. We've got to have somewhere to house people. We've got to have somewhere to put people. There's more and more people are being invited to move to Florida. We are the capital. And so we've got to have somewhere to house them. So thank you all for doing everything you can without breaking the law, doing what we asked you to do when we allocated this funding to do this. So thank you for doing what we asked you to do. And I'm ready to support it. Let's go, I love it, I like it, I love it, I want more of it.
Motion on table made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And it passes 4-1 with Commissioner Matlow in dissent. We're on number, item, thank you very much, we're on item number 12.02. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, this item seeks your approval to direct staff to work with the Big Ben Homeless Coalition to develop a purchase and sale agreement for property that's owned by the city's electric utility at 1665 Capital Circle Northwest. The proposed project would be one for veterans, homeless, formerly homeless veterans. I'd like Dr. Thomas to, Thomas Whitley, to give us a little background.
Hello, Dr. Thomas.
Too many Dr. Thomases, but Dr. Thomas Whitley, to give us a little background, the history of the parcel, you'll see a map of it. And there's been a lot of conversation about this with representatives from the Big Ben Homeless Coalition. And again, we seek your approval to move forward with the negotiation of a purchase and sale agreement.
Dr. Whitley, good to see you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, item 12.02, as the manager said, seeks your direction regarding this parcel at 1665 Capital Circle Northwest that the city currently owns. Recently, Liza McFadden, who I believe has spoken with a number of you that probably all of you know, reached out on behalf of the Big Ben Homeless Coalition to inquire about this parcel for a project that would construct an estimated 16 to 95 units to house formerly homeless veterans. So I know you are keeping count, I know Dr. Thomas is keeping count, so if we are at 2,800 units recently completed are in the pipe, you just had 105 on the previous one, you have potentially 95 on this one, that gets us over 3,000 affordable units that are recently completed or in the pipe. As is laid out in your agenda item, the Big Ben Homeless Coalition has been looking for a suitable site for this project. They have an option to purchase another parcel, but they've indicated that this parcel is their top choice because of its location, the size, and other factors that just make sense for the project that they're looking to complete. The parcel was purchased by the Electric and Gas Utility in 2004 from Talquan Electric for $1.25 million. It had a substation and corresponding distribution lines on the property. Those have since been removed. The utility has recently completed its use of the property and is now in a position to dispose of it through the process for the disposition of surplus property. And they've indicated they have no current or future utility need of the property. As you also see in the item, it was appraised in December for $2.37 million. The Big Ben Homeless Coalition has asked us to go ahead and get a second appraisal. We've ordered that, so we expect to get that back in the next few weeks. This project does align with your strategic priorities, particularly in economic development and impact on poverty. The Electric and Gas Utility supports the sale. We have, of course, as we would with any other surplus property, surveyed the rest of the departments across the organization. No other department has indicated a current or future need for this property. The staff recommendation is to direct staff to work with the Big Ben Homeless Coalition to develop a purchase and sale agreement for the property. That, of course, will be brought back to you whenever that's ready for your final approval. So while I've been the main point of contact on this, as you can imagine, just like the previous item, this touches a number of departments, Housing and Community Resilience, UPI, Electric and Gas Utility, Real Estate. And so we continue that theme of collaboration. And our real estate director, Robert Culverhouse, is with us this afternoon as well. So we're available for questions. And I know that Holly Bernardo, CEO of the Big Ben Homeless Coalition, is here, and you'll hear from her momentarily.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, public comment on this?
Holly Bernardo is the only speaker on this item.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Holly Bernardo. My address is 1957 White House Road, oh, my goodness, that's my old address, I'm so sorry. And I'm forgetting my new address, so, hold on, I'll think of it. I don't know currently.
2729?
2729 West Pensacola Street is Hope's address.
That's okay.
I'm giving you my parents' address ironically, but thank you for letting me speak on this item. Big Ben Homeless Coalition is a nonprofit in Tallahassee with a mission to end homelessness in the Big Ben through education, advocacy, leadership, and the provision of quality affordable housing. This land would be used to develop affordable housing for veterans with a chronic homeless history, and it's in line with the city plan of getting veterans homelessness to functional zero by 2025. Our intent is to obtain site control of the land from the city of Tallahassee, and the final awarding of the land would be contingent upon financing from Florida Housing Finance Corporation, likely early next year, allowing us to build the housing. The financing will be comprised of low-income housing tax credit and state funding from Florida Housing. Unlike traditional affordable housing, this is permanent supportive housing, where services and housing work together to support residents of higher need. Because this type of housing typically serves people with a much lower income, it's critical that we inquire little to no debt when the project is ready for occupancy. Additional support, often from local governments in the form of land or additional financing, helps make many of these projects financially feasible for a nonprofit to do. We understand that the city of Tallahassee is focused strategically on affordable housing in the legislature, and the legislature is in the legislature, and the legislature is, too, with the Live Local Act, which is likely to increase funds for affordable housing in the coming year. And this request will line us up to be prepared to take advantage of some of those future funds. We are partnered with Birdsong Housing, a development company with Steve Auger, who has successful experience developing the construction of affordable housing of communities of significant size and complexity throughout the state. Birdsong's experience includes housing for low-income families and seniors, housing for households that need supportive services with a homeless history, like similar to this, in what Big Ben hopes to do, and housing for farmworkers and their families and for persons with special needs. So, we've got a developer that has a lot of history in this space, and we're really excited about being able to bring forth the project and do mixed and affordable housing for veterans in our community.
Next speaker, Mr. Clark.
No other speakers on the item.
Holly, if you don't mind, I've got a couple of questions for you real quick. And I'm sorry, for whatever reason, we weren't able to touch base on this project, so I'm kind of new to the table on this. Tell me more about Birdsong. I'm not familiar with them.
They, Birdsong is Steve Auger, who used to be the head of Florida Housing, that's his development company.
Okay.
And you might know, he's worked with Independence Landing, just a development company that has done several affordable housing projects throughout the state.
Got it. So, the acquisition would be by Big Ben Homeless Coalition.
For the land.
Ownership of the land would be Big Ben Homeless Coalition. Birdsong's going to build on top?
It's a joint partnership.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thanks to the Big Ben Homeless Coalition for all the work you do in our community. My objection is going to be, I mean, as I always state, I don't think we should continue to sell public land without any type of competitive bid process, whether it's a private developer or a nonprofit, no matter how, how much we want to see a particular development. I think if it was our desire to sell this four and a half acres for homeless or veteran housing, we could put out a request for proposals to do just that. I think that would be the appropriate way to sell any public land. And just out of, when we look at our real estate policy, while the city commission does have the ability to sell off land without a competitive process, I think that is meant to be more the exception to the rule. Instead, what we seem to have is every time we sell public land, we're getting a staff recommendation that the city commission should use their purview to sell it. And I don't think that's the way staff should be approaching selling public land. I think it should go to a competitive process. If there's a question or a commissioner particularly wants to bring something up, I think that would be the appropriate time to do that. Can, Mr. Manager, do we know, what was the last piece of public property we sold that went to competitive bid?
Let me ask, Robert Culverhouse is our real estate director, he'll know that.
Robert, thank you.
Absolutely. Actually, we just, we're working on a purchase and sale agreement right now for a piece of property on the corner of Willawney and Centerville. It went out for an invitation for bid last year, and that bid came back with a single bidder. We negotiated with that single bidder for a purchase price, and we anticipate it will close here in the next 30 to 60 days.
And how long did that process take?
From the time that we issued the invitation for bid until the time that we, it was, received final approval, was approximately 13 months.
And when we look at some of the properties we sold and the time it takes to close and the time it takes for really the steps to be aligned, it fits into the same timeframe. So, I just think, moving forward, we should have a very fair and competitive process because it opens the door for accusations that most likely, you know, aren't true. But we should protect ourselves, we should protect our government, we should protect the people of Tallahassee and their assets. And to do that, we should do things transparently through competitive bids. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protim.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to support this, and I'll make the motion that we accept staff recommendation.
Seconded by the Mayor Protim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment, Mayor Protim?
Yes, sir. Let me just say to the Big Ben Homeless Coalition, thank you for the work that you're doing in our community to help us make sure that homelessness is rare and non-recurring, and especially for our veterans who have put their lives on the line for our freedoms. The least we can do is to try to, wherever we can, to try to support them. It breaks my heart to see a vet holding a sign on the side of the road. If we can use this vacant land that is of no use right now to anyone else to house them, then we need to move expeditiously to make sure that that happens. So, I'm happy to support this.
Sure.
You know, I would just say that, you know, this is one of those opportunities where we have the opportunity to use our discretion, Commissioner. And I can't think of a better use of this land. I mean, would we want to sell it to somebody to make millions of dollars? Or do we want to possibly make it available to the Big Ben Homeless Coalition where we can honor our veterans, those who put their lives on the line for us? So that we could be here and that we could live the lives that we live, that we would want to use that discretion to be able to partner, to make sure that they have an opportunity to be housed, those that want to. And so, I think that that's why we're using this discretion, that's why it's in the policy. It's no secret, we've had this discussion before. If it were the will of the commission to change it, it would have been changed by now. But I don't think any of us have the will, or at least the majority of us don't have the will, to change the policy where we can't have that kind of discretion. And so, Holly, I want to thank you all for what you do, the leadership that you exercise in helping us to make sure that we do address housing and homelessness in our community. And I'll say again, second to public safety, this is the most important issue facing us in this community. And we have an opportunity here now, again, to add to the number of units that we can make available to get people off the streets and out of cars and wherever else they're living other than with a roof over their head. And so, I'm excited to support this effort as well.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I will support this and thank you also for all the work that you do, especially for our veterans. And I think that the goal of functional zero is a great goal and a great way to start. I think we can all agree on that. I do, though, agree with Commissioner Matlow that we, I do believe, are disregarding this policy. I understand we can use our discretion, and I think this is an example of when using our discretion is appropriate. But I am uncomfortable with how frequently we are selling public land without going through the bidding process. Public land is a scarce resource. It is a precious commodity, and it's not just, it's not just ours, it's everyone's. And I think to the example of, you know, the 13-month process, we take it to bid, it gives the public an opportunity to weigh in as well. Or there to be competitive bids, I mean, that's, that's the whole point. I also just want to say, as far as the item is concerned, and I did email our city manager and Dr. Whitley got back to me, I make this point a lot, it's really important to me that in our agenda items, not only in the recommendations, but in the content and context itself, that we explain alternatives, that we explain how we got to the staff recommendation. I think that's important for the public's knowledge, it's important for our knowledge as commissioners, so that we actually know that we're making the best decision. So, in the future, I mean, I just want, I've said it, I'd love to see that. And what I'm referring to specifically is the letter from the Big Ben Homeless Coalition. I know there were a lot of discussions that took place, and I wasn't a part of those because that was between staff and y'all, but of a lease agreement. And I understand that because of this land being owned by the utilities, that was complicated, if not impossible. But I just say that to say that I want to see that kind of stuff included in our agendas so that we can at least know that we've rejected certain alternatives, and it can, sometimes there might be ways around that, that we make it work. So, I just wanted to say that. But I do agree, I think we're entering into dangerous territory when this becomes a habit. As far as I know from conversations I've had, the commission, the city, has not operated in this way in, in the past, where it seems like it's the default that we, at least from what comes to us, that there not be a competitive bidding process. Thank you.
I got the Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On point. I just want to make it clear that I get these kinds of questions answered in my briefings.
Briefings.
And so, I'm aware of how we got here because if I have questions, the staff goes back and get me answers so that by the time I get here, we're ready to make decisions and I don't have to chastise them for not including something that I now, I already understand why it's not there because I've had that briefing and can explain it to constituents, why things are the way they are. And I am not going to be bound by what past commissions or commissioners have said and done because I'm here now, and when they were here, they did what they thought was best. I'm doing the best that I can with the information that I've been able to not only get from staff, but to get from the community and get from my own research. And so, I don't come here lightly to make a decision. I take my briefings, I get the information that I need so I can make a sound decision that I can stand on. So, I just wanted to make that clear so anyone who's listening will know that we have this opportunity to get this information prior to getting here to today. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter on point.
Thank you. I did ask my questions to staff beforehand. This is, the reason we have public meetings is so that the public can be informed, so that they can engage. That's why we have agendas, that's why we have democracy. I really am asking you, if you could, I feel insulted when you many times have directed at me and others that you get these questions answered in your briefings. That is your business, how I operate as a commissioner is my business. I speak to staff constantly, and it is my right to ask questions, and it is what the constituents who I speak to ask of me and expect of me. I respect how every single one of us operates as a commissioner. We all have different styles, we all bring something different to this body that I value, and I would appreciate being shown that respect. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, look, we have to have these discussions in public. Like, any indication that we're making the collective decisions not in a public meeting would be against the law. So, I mean, the whole, we have commission meetings, so we can discuss these issues. You can hear our opinion, we can hear your opinion, and we can collectively decide. I respect if you come to your decision before getting to the public meeting, that's your prerogative. But the city commission does have a job to do, and that is to lay out different points of view and collectively make our decision. The only other point I wanted to add, Commissioner Richardson, I agree with all the benefits of this project to our veterans and the housing it could provide. And going to a competitive bid wouldn't negate any of that. The great thing about owning it as publicly land, we do have control of its destiny. So, if we wanted to put it out to bid, having requirements for affordable housing, having requirements for veteran housing, having requirements for homeless services, we could do any of that and not just from one bidder. And then, if it does come back and it would just be one bid from Big Ben Homeless Coalition, we could accept that bid and the project would move forward. But when we look at the timeline of these projects, when we look at the massive multimillion developments that we have seen historically over the last two years, this may be an exception to the rule, but then we broke the rule on every other time we sold public land on Gaines Street, on Tennessee Street. On the next item, it just continues to come and come, and there's not a competitive process. So, if we're going to take a position that we're against selling land so somebody can make multimillion dollars, that doesn't track with the decisions we've made to date. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to finish my closing comments and call for a vote. I support the measure on the table. I think this is a great project. I do wish that we had the opportunity to speak in advance, and in the future, I hope we do have the ability to do so. We're talking about providing affordable housing to homeless veterans. I'm all in. My concern is, is that if you get into a competitive bid process, which I will talk about in a second, you're going to have a developer that's going to come in and outbid you. And if the goal is to go to the highest bidder, we're not going to accomplish this goal. I'm right there with you. Now, let's be very clear, there are two policies that are being confused here, and Mayor Protim, I do agree, it is very important for us to take our briefings prior to the city commission meetings to have a better understanding so that we're all on the same page. Nobody is taking away anybody's right to ask questions. Nobody is saying that we can't sit and discuss this for hours on end. But I highly encourage everyone to take their briefings on a regular basis, not just email questions, but to take their briefings on every single issue that comes before us. We have policy in place that when the city of Tallahassee is liquidating assets, land, we go to an RFP process. We also have policy in place that says, when the city is approached by someone that is interested in buying a parcel of land, what does staff do? They bring it to our attention. It's our responsibility to make decisions, not the staff's responsibility. It is our responsibility, and that's why this is before us today, to take a vote, whether you support it or you don't support it. I do support this. Staff is doing exactly what they should, which is bring it to the attention of the commission to decide the fate of this particular item in the parcel moving forward. So, again, with the item before us, the motion's been made by the Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Protim. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And it passes 4-1 with Commissioner Matlow in dissent. We are on item number 12.03. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval of the sale of property on West Virginia Street to Peerless Development. You'll recall, you previously approved the sale of property of about .26 acres on West Tennessee Street for a multi-parcel assembly and a mixed-use development. They have since assembled additional property and have asked to purchase an approximate .49 acres of additional properties. They have engaged with the neighborhood prior to bringing this to us, and I would like Assistant City Manager Tetter to give a little bit of overview, and you can see a description on the screen of where this property is located.
Mr. Tetter.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to break the cycle. I'm not a doctor, but I do have a master's degree in urban planning and about 30 years' experience. Maybe that moves the needle closer in terms of practice. As the city manager indicated, you did authorize the sale of a piece of property, a small piece of property that was fronting Tennessee Street that's in that blue area. And since that time, the developer was able to get a contract for that peerless added parcel. You see that highlighted in the yellow. Once they got that under contract, they did approach the city of Tallahassee and said, we are interested in trying to, again, square up the property. And the city's property directly to the rear of that is the property that we're talking about, is .49 acres. Consistent with the terms of the previous sale of the property, there were a number of concessions from the developer that was a part of that development agreement at the time of purchase. One, and probably of particular importance, is working with the OEV department to meet our goal, or attempt to meet our goal for our MWSB policies. Now, this is not required if they come in for typical development. And so, you were able to leverage the sale to include that provision as part of a private development. And in this project, in terms of dollars, it means about another 11 to 70 million dollars that could be added to the MWSB workforce in our community. So, that's significant. They are also agreeing to recruit both construction and post-construction jobs within the Greater Frenchtown South Side District. That is your CRA boundary, that is where the TIF that will be generated by this project will be shifted back into that district until it terminates. Additionally, as you had approved through the CRA, and this was a project I worked on with the Magnolia Oaks Development, is working with Tempo to try to get some of the disconnected young people in our community job opportunities, real construction opportunities as part of this project. They have agreed to that as well. They also agreed to seek to incorporate Frenchtown businesses into their commercial footprint. There's about 14,000 square feet, if I recall correctly, that would be proposed on this site. And again, if businesses are not located in their, in their development, they are willing to put in their welcome package to their new residents of the businesses that are in the Frenchtown District. So, with those that were already a part of the previous agreement, they agreed to meet all of those terms. They also working with the CAT team. So, this is something, they approached the CAT team and said, look, we want to work with the community, we want to be a part of the community. So, they went to the CAT team and they worked out an agreement that we are bringing back to you all. So, what you have in your agenda materials is what they worked out specifically with the CAT team. And the two additional provisions they added was, one, a contribution of an additional $100,000. of an additional $100,000 for improvements in the Carter Howell Strong Park. And the second part is still of very significance with them is just how it looks in the community. They want to restrict flags and banners in their development. And that is something that the developer has agreed to, to do in perpetuity on the development. And so with that, I'm pleased to present to you the agreement that was forged between the neighborhood and the developer, and I recommend approval of the item.
Mr. Manager for final comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to underscore, make sure it's understood. You'll recall when this was originally discussed with the quarter acre parcel, there was a lot of dialogue about the neighborhood, working with the neighborhood and these kind of things. As this has progressed and this particular lot has come into focus, the developer went straight to the neighborhood to tell them their intentions, to seek their support. Wayne mentioned it. CAT team is a term for a group of neighborhood citizens in the Frenchtown area. And so that's how they've approached this, to go seek the support of members of the neighborhood. They've done that. And in that, there was discussions about how they could add more value. So I didn't, I wanted to make sure that was real clear in the comments. It's a, it's a different kind of approach. I would say an unconventional approach for developers, but that's what they've done. And I wanted to make sure we pointed that out well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, public comment on this item.
Mr. Mayor, Stanley Sims is the only speaker we have on this item.
Mr. Sims, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes.
My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 32. I mean, I'm sorry, 13.
20.
Out there on Buck Lake Road. It is a new approach, but I would call it the gentification approach. The gentification approach. And then I look at, and Mr. Commissioner Matlow, let me apologize because I had issue with you bringing up these kind of concerns on a veteran. But looking, I come back at this, I have to be careful because I'm trying not to allow my emotions. And the police is around here. Barber's here. I don't want to go to jail. But this is gentification. Why didn't someone go to the CAT team and ask the CAT team, do you have any black developers willing to develop this land? That's when you go to the CAT team. You don't go to the CAT team and say, hey, cats, we got a white developer that we gonna come in and guess what? We gonna give y'all flyers. We gonna give, we gonna make sure that they have flyers. Wow. The new approach called gentification. Let's call it what it is. Mr. Matlow, I apologize.
Our next speaker, please. Mr. Clark.
That's the last speaker on the item.
All right. Let's open it up for discussion. Mayor Pro Tim.
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
Second.
Been probably moved by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Matlow for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious, and I brought this up on a previous sale. I think we had a 6% brokerage fee on Gaines Street for a property that was never listed. I think ViStar had a 4% brokerage fee. This has a 4.5% brokerage fee. I'm wondering why we continue to pay real estate brokers to sell property that never gets listed at all.
Big to policy?
Yeah, let me ask Robert Culverhouse. This is not so much policies as it is the conditions of the industry. Brokerage fee would be part of a transaction. Robert, you can probably answer better than I can.
Certainly. Whether it's residential, commercial, vacant land, it's typical to have a broker tree involved when there are brokers involved. In this case, the broker for Peerless Group brought this item to us, and they will be involved from start to finish, from purchase and sale agreement all the way through closing, helping us pull together the various documents, the, working with the closing agency attorneys that are involved. So they will be earning their commission on this one.
And so how do you determine that each property, what the brokerage fee is going to be?
It is a, there is not a, not a norm. It's just, it's a negotiated.
If I brought a $4 million piece of property and got an extra 2%, and this property is at 4%, shouldn't we be the ones setting what brokerage fee we're asking? And shouldn't we be asking brokers to find us potential buyers?
Well, we, well, in this case, we, the broker did bring us the buyer, and the commission is negotiated.
The broker brought us a buyer to negotiate with. You know, generally, commission policy speaks to unsolicited offers. And that's what we've seen in the past. An unsolicited offer directly from a buyer doesn't really necessitate a broker. And it really seems we have a wide spectrum from 4% to 6% of extra money that's going out of our pockets because we're not setting a firm rate of what we're going to charge. And we're not even putting it into a process that's standard real estate norms of listing a property or going to a bid. So I mean, the whole thing to me, I think these percentages are made up. I think it's a farce to not have a set policy if we're going to allow brokerage fees in unsolicited offers. And, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars are walking out of the taxpayers' bank account because we're not firm, you know, on a price. I think 6% is too high. I think 4.5% is too high. I think 3% you could probably get there, but I would object to that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment, there's a motion on the table made by Commissioner Richardson. No, excuse me, the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And it passes 3-2 with Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Matlow in dissent. All right, we are on item number 12.04. JetBlue is excited.
This is exciting, Mr. Mayor. I wish, I wish I could do it. I can't, I can't steal the thunder. Let me ask Vanessa Spalding to come forward. I want to introduce Vanessa. She is filling in for David Pollard. We would all expect David to present this. He is traveling and can't make it, but we are in excellent hands. Vanessa is the manager at the airport in charge of the foreign trade zone and air service development, recently promoted. So I think she's probably off to a pretty good start, I would say. Pretty big fish to catch. And so she's going to give us the presentation. We've heard a lot about it, this announcement last week. We wanted to make sure that everybody had the advantage of having the details. And we have some, some even better news, I think, to share tonight. So with that, I won't steal the thunder. Vanessa, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, Vanessa, before you begin, colleagues, let me remind you, there's no action. This is a presentation to update us on what's going on.
It's some good news.
Oh, great news. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, city manager and mayor. Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners and appointed officials. Again, my name is Vanessa Spalding, and I am the manager of air service development and the foreign trade zone at the Tallahassee International Airport. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. I consider it an honor. Before I even start my presentation, I do have some very exciting news to share, as you mentioned. JetBlue has announced today scheduled service between the Tallahassee International Airport and Fort Lauderdale. And you can go online today and book your tickets for just $99 at jetblue.com. And you can begin, so you can begin booking your tickets today. This is, this is the result and culmination of a lot of very, very hard work on the part of the airport team and city staff over many years to secure additional flight options and lower fares for the community. So we're very, very excited about this news. This service will be daily morning flights between Tallahassee and Fort Lauderdale beginning on January 4th, 2024. So we're very excited about that. On behalf of the Director of Aviation and the entire airport team, I'm very, very proud and excited to announce new air service with JetBlue Airways at the Tallahassee International Airport. JetBlue's service will help advance the commission's strategic priorities to achieve a $1 billion annual economic impact and 1 million total annual passengers by 2024. JetBlue will offer nonstop daily jet service between the Tallahassee International Airport and Fort Lauderdale Hollywood International Airport, beginning in January of 2024. This new service will provide global connectivity to more than 100 destinations worldwide. In the same way that Delta connects Tallahassee to its hub in Atlanta, JetBlue will connect Tallahassee to its hub in Fort Lauderdale. JetBlue is a low-cost carrier with average fares that are typically lower than legacy carrier fares in the same market. JetBlue's arrival will create, will create more competition with our existing carriers, and we expect this to result in lower fares for our community. Travelers will also benefit from the expanded flight options in destinations. So to reiterate, the timing couldn't be better. We're very excited about JetBlue's announcement and that you can go online today and book flights for only $99. But this next slide shows just a partial view of JetBlue's roadmap. As I mentioned earlier, JetBlue's network will provide global connectivity to over 100 destinations around the world, including the United States, the United Kingdom, Canada, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. JetBlue currently offers 71 flights a day to 31 destinations, including 14 international destinations to Mexico, the Caribbean, and Latin America. In keeping with the city's organizational value to provide exceptional citizen service, we have many fantastic projects currently underway that are designed to enhance the passenger experience at the airport. As you're all well aware, last year, we broke ground on the international processing facility last May, in May of last year. This new facility will be a 20,000 square foot, I'm sorry. This new facility will be a 40,000 square foot addition to the terminal, and it will have two levels. The main level will be for the processing of passengers, and the lower level will accommodate the processing of general aviation and cargo. This $28 million investment will be a major economic driver for the region and is slated for completion in 2024. This slide shows a rendering of what the facility will look like once completed. And this next slide shows what the facility looks like now under construction. So right now, crews are performing site work, and they're working on the underground utilities. And we expect this to go vertical in the very near future. We're also working to modernize the inside of the terminal with Phase 3 of the Terminal Rehabilitation Project. Some of the upgrades to come that you can see here on this slide include new terrazzo and carpet, new and brighter LED lighting, new ceilings, renovated restrooms, and new seating. We're also working on an upgrade to our flight information display system. And I am personally most excited about the Dunkin'.
There you go. There you go.
I drink a lot of coffee, so I'm very excited about this. The Dunkin' concession area will be located airside in the terminal, just beyond the passenger security checkpoint. So we're making great progress on the Dunkin', and right now, new menu boards are being installed. We anticipate that the construction will be completed and the employee training accomplished within the next 30 to 60 days. Finally, we're also working to replace our passenger loading bridges at the airport. So far, four of the eight bridges have been replaced, two in concourse A and two in concourse B. Next up for replacement are the international bridges at gates B5 and B6. So in closing, the airport team has been working very, very diligently over many, many years to secure additional flight options and frequency for the community. We now have a dedicated air service development team that is regularly engaged in face-to-face meetings at air service development conferences with the airlines, and we are aggressively working to recruit new air service in Tallahassee. We're working very closely now with JetBlue's startup team to ensure a successful launch next year in January. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Awesome. And that's a great work. Thank you for being here on behalf of David. Please tell the entire team at the airport, y'all are doing amazing things, and we certainly do appreciate it. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Cook?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. Any, any final comments? Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you for the, thank you for the reporting. Thank you. We can now say we have international travel. Just go to Fort Lauderdale and wherever you want to go.
You can connect to the world.
That's right. So concourse A or B?
Concourse A or B?
Where would they fly out of?
They would fly out of B when it's time. Those would be the international gates at B5 and B6.
Okay. Thank you.
I want you to know that when we made the announcement last week, I ran into many, many, many legislators from South Florida that were very excited that we're expanding the airport and expanding air travel and air service. And they all say, thank you.
Well, we're very excited. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, first of all, great work. You know, we're always excited at the new developments at the airport. And I wanted to point out something small but meaningful that I think I saw in the mock-up. There'll be a water bottle filling station past security.
Yes, that is correct. We're going to have new, hard to say, water bottle fillers. Everyone's excited about that.
Yeah, I think a lot of people will be happy to see that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, finally, coming before the city commission this evening, 12.05, the update on the Capitol Regional Real-Time Crime Center. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just say on the other one, did y'all hear $99?
$99. I went to the site to verify that.
You know, we were hopeful it would be something like that. They weren't missing the third digit. It's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This next item's an update as well. You've taken action along the way in the development of the Real-Time Crime Center. That's a partnership with the Sheriff's Office, FSU PD, as well as FDLE. And so there's a lot of progress that has occurred. We are at the verge of starting that up and commercializing it, if you will. And we wanted to take the opportunity today to share where we are, kind of how it's going to work, and share it with you and the public as well. So Deputy Chief Larson is here. He's on point for a lot of this. He's behind the scenes, working on many things like this, among other duties that he has. But he's going to provide the presentation tonight.
DC, thank you very much. I'd like to remind my colleagues again, this is an update. There is no action required. DC Larson.
Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners, appointed officials. Chief Revels currently out of the area at the Commission for Law Enforcement Accreditation. Otherwise, he'd be here to speak to this item. But I had the opportunity to provide an update for the Capitol Regional Region Real-Time Crime Center and give some historical background. We've been working holistically to address public safety with our partners here in this region in several different facets. And this is one of them, where we've coordinated with LCSO, FSU PD, FDLE, and also the FSU School of Criminal Justice collaboratively to come together into one location to attempt to really bring together what each agency has into one venue so that we can start to share information, intelligence, things that are happening in real time, and provide more safety to the community and also the officers and deputies that are responding to calls. So currently, we have one supervisor that is assigned out at the area. We have three analysts at this time. We're hiring a fourth. LCSO is providing the same, along with two part-time analysts. FSU is providing a supervisor and an analyst also. Those people will be co-located in the Real-Time Crime Center, and it's a phenomenal center. You have an opportunity and you would like to go out, please contact us. We'll be happy to walk you through it and see what it can do and what they do out there. But coordinating with these three largest law enforcement agencies in this second judicial circuit has not been done before like this. So we do expect to see an impact in violent crime and crime in general and arrests on scene. With the partnership, we're able to actually have coverage 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So with staffing from each agency, we're able to cover the entire gamut of time for the entire county. It's going to enhance communication amongst the agencies. Normally, we'd have meetings and things like this, but now, in real time, the analysts will be co-located. So they will start to see crime patterns occur more quickly than we do right now. They'll see crime patterns occurring in the county that also occur in the city and be able to jump on those as we, you know, in real time. So we're staffing them with law enforcement analysts. We are using technology that each agency has, such as license plate readers, public safety cameras, dispatch notes, history, traffic cameras, those type of things. So when a crime actually really occurs, they are noticed in the center that the crime is occurring, whether it's a priority one crime, a serious crime. They're alerted to that. They immediately see it pop up on the screen. They get to read the CAD notes, just like an officer would, see what's going on. They're able to see if there's camera technologies within a quarter mile, say, of that area. Click on that and actually view that area. It should assist greatly in, when officers are ingressing to scenes, give us information, real-time information. The collaborative part with The collaborative part with FSU College of Criminology was going to be interesting. The research should help with future Real-Time Crime Center development, and also will help us kind of evaluate what our public safety strategies are. We're going to have actually a real college that's watching what we're doing, able to pull in what our statistics are, how we're responding to calls, where we're responding to calls, where we're coming from, see it all mapped out, everything else, and give us insight on what they think we can do to enhance, you know, our response to crime in the community. It should accelerate the apprehension of criminals with the information that we get. We're able to probably, with the LPRs in each agency, we've already seen successes with them, but once we co-locate those, that information for vehicle tags and things like that where crimes of violence happen, to be given out and then solved that crime very quickly, is going to be a great asset for us. And so at this point, we are ready for occupancy. We are going to start February 25th at 10:00 a.m. That will be the first shift that we have, and it will be 24/7 after that.
Excellent. Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have one speaker on the item, Stanley Sims.
Sims, your name and address, please?
I remember it now, Mayor. It's 1320 Avondale Way. I want to say that I'm very familiar with the collective, and I am supportive of the collective. I remember when Ms. Barbara brought this to fruition. But just to give you an example of something that I have a concern with is, a couple of weeks ago, we had an individual downtown with a mental illness that was attacking women. And I got that notice on my phone faster than the people downtown because my wife is a very good worker, am I right, Ms. Jackson? And she goes to various buildings. And so I think that those kind of heightened situations, the distribution of that information, and I'm not being critical, Mr. Mayor, it was out, but it was a, I guess with me, it was a lag time. And I feel like maybe the collective can enhance or look at those processes when we have situations like that, and not just even those kinds of situations, when we have shootings, disturbances, and these kinds of things, that if, I believe that now that the collective is up and running and it has staff, it could better also not just use it for collecting to apprehend, and I'm with that, too, but I'm also saying, let's use that data that if we can inform our public. And the reason why I illustrate these things is because none of this is going to work if you don't have a relationship. And I just think that we're building things and not building true relationships. I think that, and this is my opinion, I think that your relationships come prescribed. You want a relationship with me, here's the prescription. And Tallahassee is not like that. We're diverse people. And so my goal is that you get uncomfortable, and when I say the collective as whole, it is my job, my obligation, because I got two black boys. I want to know the police chief of all of those organizations.
Here in about 15 seconds.
Because it's about building relationships. And so I'm happy, just want also get us, look at a process that we can be alerted fast.
Our next speaker, please, Mr. Clark.
No other speakers on this item, Mayor.
Colleagues, no action to be taken. Any comment, questions? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Thank you for the information, Deputy Chief. I do want to have a tour, but we'll be in touch.
Yeah, very excited, D.C. This is a great next step forward for the community. Appreciate it. Mr. Manager, do we have any other business come before us at the City Commission meeting?
No, sir.
All right, we got a public hearing that begins at 6 o'clock, so we stand in recess. Ladies and gentlemen, at 6 o'clock, I'd like to call the public hearing to order. We have a quorum. We are on item number 14.01. Mr. Manager and Artie White from Planning?
Item number 14.01.
I'm sorry, Madam Attorney, I apologize.
That's quite all right. The first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-0-02, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee updating the capital improvements element of the 2030 Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan, Providing for Severability, Conflicts, and an Effective Date. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-0-02, thereby adopting the FY23/FY27 update to the five-year capital improvement schedule related to the capital improvements element of the Tallahassee Leon County 2030 Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Mr. Clark, any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Colleagues?
Move staff recommendation?
Been properly moved, the staff recommendation from the Mayor Protem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 14.02, Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-0-03, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 21, Article 1, Section 21-7, Utilities of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee Regarding Enforcement of Excavation Penalties, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Severability, and Providing an Effective Date. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-0-03.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Mr. Clark, any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues?
Moving option of option number one?
Thank you. Option number one, staff recommendations been properly moved by the Mayor Protem and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Do you know further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 14.03, Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.03 is the first and only public hearing on Resolution Number 23-R-04, a resolution abandoning the entire unnamed right-of-way located south side of West Lafayette Street and on the north side of West St. Augustine Street between Gate Street and Lauren Street in the City of Tallahassee, Leon County, Florida. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the public hearing and pass Resolution Number 23-R-04.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues?
Move staff recommendation?
Been properly moved, the staff recommendation by the Mayor Protem is their second.
Thank you.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Yes, ma'am. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Mayor, I was contacted by someone asking about, I think there's some structures, some houses, or something in that area. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Manager?
Commissioner, I'm going to have to find out. We don't have any immediate knowledge of that. Maybe I could look to one of these gentlemen. I didn't have any luck on discovering what you asked me about. Let me ask Artie if he knows.
Mr. White, thanks for joining us.
To my knowledge, it's just a retaining wall, and there's no actual structures in the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment?
No.
None. Staff recommendation's been moved properly by the Mayor Protem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney, do we have anything else come before us at the public hearing?
No, we do not.
Excellent. We are on unengaged speakers. Mr. Clark?
Mayor, we have two speakers at this time. The first is Stanley Sims. As with the earlier portion of our meeting, speakers will have three minutes for remarks.
Great. Your name and address for the record, please?
Mayor, I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. Mayor, this is a very sensitive issue. It's about having access to the Tallahassee Police Department. I've emailed the city manager and the deputy city manager because of the complications and the complex situation that has occurred and the current legal manner that is. Deputy Detective Williams gave me the suggestion to go to FDLE to file my complaint in reference to being heckled by the police chief. After two visits with them, and their investigator told me that because of state law, that I needed to contact the city manager or the mayor. I contacted the city manager. He replied, he is through with this issue. I am now coming to you, asking for your guidance of how do I safely file my complaint of what occurred to me in front of you and of the rest of your members of the dais that I felt was inappropriate behavior by the chief police. I want to file my complaint, sir. I'm also, Mr. Mayor, having problems with city employees who disregards me. They don't answer my questions directly, or they don't answer at all. For instance, I'm having great problems meeting sensitive deadlines with Elizabeth, dealing with that, you know. At the last city manager meeting, I went and talked to her, and I said, I'd like to meet with you. She said, I will when I have time, you know. But I see other individuals jump the line. And so I'm not so keen about the second issue, Mayor, but my safety. I think that warrants a conversation with you and I, whether if you make that, if you feel comfortable on the phone, or Zoom, or whatever, but we need to have a conversation of a path forward where we can respect one another, and I can continue doing business.
So I appreciate you bringing this to my attention, and I would give you the same consider this formal knowledge, I would give you the same advice, either on the phone or right here on the dais, that the detective did, is go ahead and file the complaint with FDLE.
No, they told me that I could not, sir. They said that I had to, they could not take it with FDLE that I had to contact the city manager or you in doing so. And you would give me the guidance of how, because I have to file with IA, with the Tallahassee Police Department. And so I've tried to reach out to them by email, and two calls that were not answered.
Sure. So if you email me your complaint, I will email it to IA on your behalf, and I'm on the record right now. It's all you got to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, absolutely. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Cheryl Harwood.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please?
I'm new at this, so bear with me. Thank you for all meeting me. I want to let you know, I've got deep roots here in Tallahassee. I've been here for over 62 years. The area I'm talking about is where I grew up, so I'm trying to make this short as possible. I have gotten with Ms. Cynthia Barbara about this issue. She is looking into it. Thank God she has been a blessing, because I need to bring her into another situation that I'm going to try to make as brief as possible, is, and I got with the officer that was here, the chief, there is a problem with a bar and grill on Thorpe Street, 926, and Mr. Richardson, that I know you've probably had the same problem where you live. And this is on Thorpe Street where I live, at 1713 Thorpe Street. I mean, 1713 Cordell, which is near Stars Meat Market, which is where this building is located. The bass is ridiculous. I don't hear the music, I hear bass, and I'm deaf in my left ear. It comes all the way through my house, 6 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock. This has been an ongoing situation that I have called TPD about many a times, sometimes two, three, four times a week, sometimes twice in a row that day, okay? The noise ordinance, I know you're, the city manager or the attorney, I know you've got this on the table, and y'all are trying to move forward with this issue, and I just want to let you know that we really need this something done. There are five schools in my area, and, you know, this is not setting good standards for these five schools. The next 20, 30 years, they're going to be sitting where y'all sitting, okay? It needs to be dealt with. I've been in my business, I've been in my home for 25 years, and I can, you know, and I grew up around Levy Park, and I remember when Thorpe Street was two lanes. I remember when Martin Luther King was the railroad. That's how far I go back. They didn't get these gray hairs for nothing. I put 42 years in with Publix, just retired. I want some peace in my life, okay? And I have talked to this about my neighbors, and they are on the same page. We have families moving out of the neighborhood because of this issue. It's not good. It's bringing our home values down, and it's just, and then another thing is, I feel like the city has forgotten about Thorpe Street.
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay, Thorpe Street. The abandonment buildings, the codes are not being kept. It's just drive down between Monroe and Ocala, and see the, there's roofs that are coming off. Property owners are not taken care of, the renters that, you know, it just brings our home value down. Crime, go down Thorpe, where Old Rainbow and Thorpe, all that abandonment issues are, where graffiti is, it brings in crime, and I would like to have more police presence, more TPD officers, because they used to hang out there.
You have 30 minutes.
And I don't see them anymore, but I do support TPD very much.
Thank you.
You know, I totally understand what they're going through.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Deputy Chief Larson, if you wouldn't mind, in regards to patrol, checking in with our citizen that just testified, matter of fact, about the situation, that'd be great. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Michael McLaughlin. Mayor, this is the last speaker for whom I have a forum.
Okay. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please?
Everyone, good evening. Good to see the lights are on this time. Sorry, I missed last meeting. The lights were off. Anyway, my name is Michael McLaughlin. Still live at 100 Cade Street. I'm here today to voice a concern and opposition to the request I read about a month ago now from the city requesting nearly a million dollars to build a state-of-the-art police training center here in town as part of the new, as part of the new police headquarters. I am, I think the timing of that announcement, I don't think there's ever a good timing for such an announcement, but I think, given the fact that a local activist here from Tallahassee, Manny Paez Terran, was killed by Georgia police in the Atlanta area defending the Wealani Forest against the proposed cop city, the expensive law enforcement training facility in the Atlanta area, that they were an activist, they were an FSU grad, very beloved by a lot of people in the community, and they were killed, kind of opposing this sort of development. It seems very untimely for the city to then make an announcement requesting a similar sort of initiative here in the city. And I guess, I think this question, this facility also raises some questions about what sort of training will be happening in this facility? How is it different than the current training the police receive? Will Eddie Gallagher or other, or criminals be involved with the training? And will the training be effective? What training has TPD received, and will it actually be effective, given the rate of shootings in this town would indicate that whatever training, police training, more training, more money for the police, doesn't seem to be addressing the issues here? And that I would encourage, and would hope that the city would put funding rather than militarizing and more training more cops, to put that money toward things that have been shown to prevent crime in the first place, things like affordable housing, things like, you know, try wild ideas like building a city-owned grocery store, finding ways to make sure that people have jobs and a safe place to sleep at night. I would encourage the city to look into spending money in those directions rather than more training for the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
I have no additional speakers, Mayor.
All right. We are on the sharing of ideas amongst City Commission. Commissioner Porter?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two issues. We've been talking about the sound ordinance since October. I'm ready to take up that conversation. I'm ready to take up that conversation and make a decision at the city commission level. I think it's gotten dragged on for quite a while, and whatever we decide, I think it's time to give that final guidance to city staff. I continue to be in favor of within the urban core limiting amplified music past midnight on weekends and 11:00 PM on weeknights. And I know we've seen countless ordinances drafted and circulated and proposed, but I think we just need to take whatever work product we have now and bring it back to the commission at the next meeting for a decision. So, I make a motion that we take up the sound ordinance at the next city commission meeting.
We were in the process, and I think we will have a draft ready by the end of this week, in terms of something that has been prepared for, I think the city manager indicated he wanted to have the stakeholders actually review that draft before it came back to you, but certainly at your direction, we will bring back that draft.
I think we have time in two weeks, and they're gonna come give us their opinion here, no matter when it comes, so I don't know if there will be agreement, but I think we just bring it back to the board. So, yeah, my motion is to bring that back at the next city commission meeting.
There's a motion to bring back the noise ordinance, no matter what state at the next meeting, for consideration. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Let's have discussion. Well, I think it sounds like it's gonna be in the proper file at the next meeting, anyway. I do feel it's important to keep the citizens involved and stakeholders. Are we boxing ourselves in by setting the deadline for the next meeting, not knowing when we're gonna be able to pull the stakeholders back together? I mean, I know our goal is next meeting.
If I could just add some comments for consideration, I think it's entirely possible we'd be ready to bring it back, but I think it may be equally as likely, if not more likely, that the stakeholders, we've been working to try to find as much common ground as we can and be as targeted with any change as we could. In the course of events, there's been really a divergence between the stakeholders, and so, you know, our commitment has been to work through them. City Attorney's Office is taking another shot at it. It's complicated. There's no doubt about it, and so, I think the risk is that we just, we abandon the process, we've engaged with the citizens. If we make a commitment today without knowing how they're gonna react to it, I mean, City Attorney's Office is working on it. In fairness, it is complicated, and so, I don't know what that's gonna look like, and I don't know how the citizens will react to it, but I would think we should allow the process to work. They understand where we are, and then you'll be as informed as you can be to take the action. Ultimately, the action will be yours, and we would make every attempt to put it on the next meeting, but it's possible it won't be ready.
All right. Mayor pro tem.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I met with the citizens, and I've received an email even this week that says something different than citizens that I met with. And I just, I don't want to abort the citizen engagement piece, because we're ready to move on, because I don't want to have to come back and revisit, because we didn't get all the information that we needed from everyone who's involved. You talk to one group, there's only one violator of this, according to them. But then, another group comes in and says, it's not only them, it's some other folks who've been around since, you know, beginning of time. So, somewhere in there lies the truth, and I don't want to have to come back a little, you know, a couple of weeks or however long, after we have rushed to do something because we're ready to move on, and then have to undo it or redo it. I think that the citizens who I met with, and I'm sure they met with all of us, didn't indicate that they wanted us to do, they wanted us to rush out and do something. They want it to be heard. We're hearing from them, and I've only heard from the residents. I haven't heard from any businesses, just the residents. So, I don't know, I don't know if I'm ready, because I don't have all of the information. So, I would like to have more information, so if this is a call-out to say, you know, if there are businesses who want to provide input to me to help me make a decision, I'm open to hearing it. Thank you.
Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, you know, Commissioner Matlow can, I guess what I was gonna say is, as far as I'm concerned, I think it would be helpful just to have it come back to us, even if we are only getting an update on where we are. I don't think we have, I think we can do both. I don't think we have to decide at the next meeting. From what I can, what I hear from residents, they want it to come back. There are, I believe in the stakeholder engagement. I wish we had started that sooner in a more formal way, but there are, this is an issue that affects everyone, and I think it's important that the public at large be able to participate as well and give them their feedback. I know this has come to us before, we've heard about this, but this iteration, what we're considering, it's not just the stakeholder groups who are having meetings with staff, it's other people who want to weigh in. So, Commissioner Matlow, you can, I don't know if you want to clarify whether you want an update, or you want to take action at that, at the next meeting, because I would like the, you know, this is, we can't talk about this unless we're at a meeting, and it is complicated. So, I don't think, I wouldn't mind seeing this come back once for an update, and then second, you know, based on, yeah, with going in a certain direction.
Motion on the tables for action, not an update. Mr. Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, what I would suggest, I'll modify the motion to bring back an agenda item illustrating any points of contention or disagreement that we're navigating through, so we can help answer it. I mean, we've heard from the citizens for four months. They know what they want. I don't think more meetings between them is gonna get them any closer. It's just time for leadership and figure out what we want to set, because right now there aren't any violators, because everybody's operating within the current ordinance and law, so that's not, there aren't certain violators out there or others. It's just whether, you know, we've set an ordinance that's conducive to the public peace and enjoyment of life and property. So, I think, let's, whatever those issues are, bring them back, you know, let us decide, give you guidance, and then we can take up the official ordinance at a further meeting.
Commissioner Richardson.
I don't have a problem at all with having an update at the next meeting, but I'm hesitant to make any final decisions or take any final action at that meeting, because we do have people engaged, and I don't, if there are no violators at this point, why would we be in a rush to come to a conclusion on an ordinance when we've got people engaged? And it, I think it behooves us to keep them engaged and come up with something that maybe not everybody can agree on, but at least a majority of the folk that have been engaged can agree on.
Manager, you wanted to weigh in again?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted, Commissioner Matlow indicated outlining the differences between the two groups. I think it would also be necessary, and I want to say this, because I want to make sure we have direction from you guys, is y'all have talked about, Commissioner Matlow mentioned again tonight, the regulation of outdoor amplified music. That's very complicated, and that's part of the issue. How do you attack the issue? How do you do it legally? And then, how do you bring together the interested parties? And so, I would put that out there, for that's part of the context as well. You know, we could, of course, bring forward something one group of citizens want, and that may not be agreed to by others, but there's an element in here that adds to the complexity of it, and I would think that had to be part of any update. So, I put that out there for context.
And I agree. I think that would be, you know, helpful to discuss, if you want to call it outdoor amplified music, if you want to call it raucous and rowdy, let's define what we want to call it and move the ball forward, because I feel like we're spinning our wheels. The people who are reaching out to me are frustrated, you know, they don't think we're marching towards any type of real conclusion, so, I mean, it'll probably be hard decisions. I mean, we'll have to decide where we want to be, but let's just bring it forward, talk about where there may be differences of opinion, how we want to define things, if it's amplified music or amplified sound, if it's a raucous and rowdy standard, if it's decibels, whatever. Let's just bring it back, talk about it, give direction of what we want developed to bring back at a future meeting. From there.
Well, I'm not gonna support the motion on the table. I am glad to hear that it sounds like it's probably gonna come back at the next meeting, if not, meeting after that. I believe in the citizen engagement, the process we have in place, and I don't think it's good public policy to create on the fly at a meeting without fully going through the process. I'm not gonna be supporting the motion on the table. All those in favor, Commissioner Matlow has made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
And the motion fails 3 to 2 with the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and Commissioner Richardson in dissent. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Yeah, and the second issue I wanted to address, and I just want to be very clear about this, Mr. Mayor, the mayor's office has no purview over any of their city commission's office. Earlier, you made some comments about how you felt commissioners should get their information, whether it's by briefing, or email, or otherwise. I'm very intentional in the way I get my information. I don't have a trusting relationship with our city manager. I don't believe we get the same information at our briefings from our city manager. In fact, for me, briefings have led to false accusations made against me, where we had to get outside counsel investigators to come show that they were false. So, respectfully, if I like to get my information by email and have my answers in writing, that's how I'm going to get it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's great, and you're absolutely correct. I don't dictate your office. You operate how you want. What I simply said on the record is, I highly encourage everyone to get their briefings, because it is a great way to be able to sit across the table from the staff. But we enjoy as well, when you send emails, just like when we send emails, we all get copied on the response, so we all benefit as well. So...
It may be helpful to us also, I mean, if you wanted to make audio recordings of your briefings, so we can learn that information as well, so we have the same.
All the same information that I get from the manager, you would get in a one-on-one as well. All the same information that I get from the attorney, you get as well. All the same information from Jim Cook, you get as well, and all the information from Mr. Sutton, you get as well. And I think I speak on behalf of the mayor pro tem, I think I speak on behalf of Commissioner Richardson, that there is no additional information that is given or not given. We are all given the same briefing.
And do you have any issue then with us discussing that information at public meetings?
Not at all. I encourage all discussion. I'm just saying that a lot of the questions can be answered during the briefings, and you choose not to take your briefing, that is your choice as a commissioner, but I, as mayor, highly encourage that we do all take our briefings. I think that it helps us all prepare for these meetings.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not at your briefing, so I'm not sure what questions you ask, and I'm not sure what information you're operating with. So, by asking questions at a public meeting, I know that all the commissioners are having the same information and the answers to the questions that I have. That's why I prefer email, because it does get sent to all commissioners, but respectfully, again, I understand your point, I just don't think it's your job or purview as a mayor to direct or even offer advice that other commissioners offer it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Richardson, you recognize?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, at the next meeting, could we get an update on where we are with the, I guess, the update of the pre-ordinance or the urban plan in regards to pre, I've got some questions about it.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, we've been doing a comparative survey of other ordinances, and I'm confident we can bring back that to the next meeting, an update, kind of an overview of what the ordinance entails today, how it compares, a little bit of history, but we'll certainly be prepared to bring that back.
And let me just say happy assurance to those who believe in that. Thank you.
Excellent. It's been a great meeting. At 6:30, we are on our way out. I hope everyone has a wonderful evening, and finally, I would like to encourage everyone to please take their briefing and be fully prepared for the meeting. Stand adjourned.